All rise. Vous voulez vous lever?
Thank you very much. The Court Officer please introduce the proceedings.
Cette session spéciale de la Cour Pénale Internationale marque l'ouverture officielle de l'année judiciaire. The special session marking the formal opening of the judicial year is now open.
Thank you. Chers collègues et amis, en hommage à tous les juges, des responsables élus et du personnel de la Cour, je vous souhaite la bienvenue à cette cérémonie solennelle qui marque formellement l'ouverture de l'année judiciaire 2019 de la Cour Pénale Internationale et je vous remercie d'avoir accepté d'être de notre. La transition d'une année calendaire à une autre ne change pas le mandat de la Cour Pénale Internationale, but it should afford us regular occasion for periodic reflections so that we may, among other things, recall the responsibility that we bear, restate our commitment to the mission we have and renew and reset the vigour and the clarity of vision with which we approach both our responsibility and our mission. A key aspect of that clarity of vision often requires specific focus on the role of the Court and of the various operators whose role or roles assist the Court to fulfil its mission and responsibility. For the ICC, this requires clarity of vision as regards the mandate of the Court as stated or reasonably implied in the various provisions of the Rome Statute. Although that goes without saying, it is also true that the truism can be understated. Allow me here to focus today on the overriding and defining mandate of the Court expressed in both explicit terms and reasonable implication. That defining and overriding mandate is accountability. But what does accountability really mean? Some may say that it simply means that a person must be punished for a crime that he or she commits. That would be true, of course, but the simplicity of that proposition often does not tell the whole story of the meaning of accountability. In its fuller import, accountability means first and foremost an assurance that no one is above the law. It means primarily that everyone, regardless of their station in life, must answer to the law. This may sound prosaic or trite at times, but is it really so? We only need to consider that not so long ago there was no permanent global mechanism at international level through which individuals could have been compelled to answer to the whole world for their actions when it was entirely impermissible asked them such questions of accountability at home because they were, to all intents and purposes, above the law. To a large part of humanity, beyond the ratification frontiers of the Rome Statute, that still remains a matter of ruleful reality. Against that background then, the dispensation of accountability presents the counter norm which requires everyone, regardless of station or stature, to answer questions in the manner of reasonably founded allegations of wrongdoing made against them. And the exercise engages the due process of transparent and fair trial. In that exercise of accountability, all the various operators present and represented in this courtroom have their respective roles to play. Here I particularly acknowledge the presence of the prosecutor and the President of the International Criminal Court Bar Association who represent both the counsel for defence as well as those who appear for the victims. The prosecutor has an important role in the process. She kicks off the process by asking those questions of accountability that must be answered. The defence counsel have an equally important role. They assist the suspects and the accused in providing full answer and defence to the questions of accountability that the prosecutor asks by making sure that questions asked are asked in a manner that is both fair and consistent with the law. Counsel for victims also play an important role in ensuring that the views and concerns and above all, interests of the victims are never overlooked. And last but not least, the judges have their own roles to play as independent and impartial arbiters. They decide whether the defence has satisfactorily answered the questions that the prosecutor asked. And here it is important to stress a few things. First, in the judicial process of accountability, the Rome Statute does not require the questions of the prosecutor to be given greater weight than the answers of the defence. Second, the Rome Statute does not require any particular outcome as a consequence of the judicial process at the ICC. The outcome must follow the process of the law. And here, the pivotal question is whether the evidence shows that the accused person was proven guilty beyond a reasonable doubt. Now, proof? Beyond reasonable doubt does not ask whether the concurrence of news reports leads us to conclude that an accused person is guilty. It means, more exactingly, that a reasonable person who has actually fully and fairly reviewed the evidence on a first-hand basis would walk away with a settled feeling in their hearts that the accused, a fellow human being, had committed the crimes as charged. Third, the Rome Statute does not express the mandates of the prosecutor, the defence counsel or the judges in the manner of a promise, let alone a guarantee of a conviction or an acquittal at the end of the day. It is enough that the prosecution was done with unstinted vigor, tempered by due sense of fairness and responsibility, that the defence was mounted with resoluteness, that counsel for victims was given ample opportunity to present the views and concerns of the victims and that the judging was done impartially according to the judicial conscience of each judge directed by their individual appreciation of evidence and the law. In the end, the prosecutor, the defence counsel, the victims counsel and the judges would have discharged the responsibilities that the Rome Statute imposed upon them, regardless of the verdict. Ladies and gentlemen, it is incorrect to consider that the prosecutor has failed or succeeded, depending on the outcome. Indeed, beyond the normative appreciation of the meaning of accountability as described above, it is especially incorrect as a practical matter to take the view that an accused person has escaped with impunity if he or she was acquitted at the end of the judicial process of accountability that I have described above. Indeed, such a view may overlook much too much. We may begin by accepting that the average trial of an international crime does not last a very short time. This is so not only before international criminal courts but also before such domestic courts as have made the effort. In the meantime, the accused must endure not only the opprobrium of the indictment of such crimes but also a general restriction of liberty in every case, even when the accused was not in detention during the process. And quite naturally, the restriction of liberty is particularly onerous if the accused was in detention for the duration of the trial. Notably, these encumbrances must be endured by the accused persons even if he or she is defended on legal aid. But imagine the weight of the burden if he or she must bear the legal costs of his or her own defence throughout the entire process. When all these are fully considered, it becomes doubtful that the reality truly warrants the view that the accused person had simply walked away with impunity if he or she was not convicted at the end of a trial process or appeal. Ladies and gentlemen, as we reflect on the mandates prescribed in the Rome Statute, we always take care at the ICC to underscore the mandate of the trust fund for victims. That mandate underscores in turn the importance that the founders of the Rome Statute placed on reparative justice for victims of violations, even when the rigors of punitive justice make it difficult to convict anyone for the harm that the victims evidently suffered. In the same vein, I must underscore the critical part that the registrar and the staff play in the work of the Court. They keep the wheels of this institution running often behind the scenes, unseen and unheard. Their roles are too varied and too numerous to list here. It is enough to acknowledge the crucial importance of their roles, one and all. With these important roles in mind, I have invited the registrar, the prosecutor and the President of the ICC Bar Association to address us today. Naturally, the prosecutor often goes in the order of hierarchy, but today we will invite the registrar to make his remarks because it will provide us with some information about where we stand and what we're doing. After his speech, we will have a musical interlude performed by the group Taika. May I now invite a registrar to take the floor?
Mr. President, Your Honours, Madam Prosecutor, Mr. President of the bar, Your Excellencies, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. It is a great honour to address you today on the opening of the 2019 judicial year. In the course of 2019, the registry will provide support to the Court in judicial proceedings in eleven situations, including two confirmation hearings at the pre-trial stage and we anticipate the surrender of another suspect very shortly. Two cases at the trial stage, reparations hearings where we will also work in partnership with the trust fund for victims to ensure they can carry out their vital role. And we will also support a number of cases before the appeals chamber which address important issues, including the relationship between the Court and its state's parties. As you have arrived at the Court today, you have met many representatives of the registry. The security staff who met you as you arrive and guarantee our safety. The staff who met you and escorted you to the places you now occupy. The staff in this chamber who ensure these proceedings run smoothly. And there are representatives here from the independent offices of the registry who provide representation for victims and support the defence. If you raise your eyes to my left and right, you will see the interpreters of the registry's language services section who make sure we can understand each other today, but more importantly, provide expertise in more than twenty languages so that this international court can function properly. But the staff you see are only part of the story, as the President has said. If you could see through this screen on your left, on my left, you would see the court reporters who are working now to ensure there is a complete record, an instantaneous record of proceedings. If you could see beyond the screen to my right, you would see the staff of the audiovisual unit. And for those of you who during this week followed the proceedings in court, whether here or across the world, it is because of their skills and expertise. If your imagination will allow you to wander beyond these immediate walls of this chamber, you would see other members of the registry. Those who ensure that we have the best staff, we recruit the best staff, those who ensure we procure the right services, those who, as we speak now, are tracking suspects that are wanted on warrants here. Those who ensure victims come to court and that they are protected wherever they are in the world. But if you would allow your imagination to really set free, to be set free and cross the seas beyond the Netherlands, you would see our staff in the field offices, in Georgia, in Cote d'Ivoire, in Mali, in the DRC, in the Central African Republic and in Uganda, who, as we speak now, are working tirelessly with affected communities, with victims and witnesses, with our states who provide us the cooperation we need. Because of the vital work the registry undertakes, we who work in the registry are acutely conscious that what we do as individuals makes a difference. And therefore, we must be diligent, give of our best, treat everyone with respect and continuously improve. And we in the registry are also very much aware that it is a great privilege to work here and help the Court fulfil its vital mandate. That mission is only possible because of the support of the state's parties, many of whom are represented here today. They provide us with our financial resources. They provide us with the great people who work in this Court. They provide the cooperation that is the lifeblood of the Court and they also sustain us in good times and when times become more challenging. And we are determined that in 2019, we in the registry will continue to demonstrate the value of the investment that the citizens of the state's parties have made in the Court and in the vital cause of international criminal justice. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Registral. Now, I will invite the group Taika to enter the courtroom.
On va tietty tietysäni On va tietty tietysäni Jokk on mieltynyt minua Minä mieltynä hänellä Hänellä on ihanat silmät Miilinulla syllä suloinen Eihän heittänyt minua Eikä yksi ei jättänynä Omaksens on ottanunna Kulaksensa kutsununnan Valkiaksensa palinnut Niin minä hänessä riipun Sekä riipun jotakin Niin kuin lintulehdi pusta kuse noksalla Orava
Jospa se joku tulisi, joka mun katalan naisi Sekä kurjan korjohaisi Näiltä oolta ovilta verrailta vierahilta Vaikka satasi salolle kuulettaisi korvenpähän panisi vajuen maata Lehille lepä ja mahan 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 Eipä ha pajuina maata Eikä läyli lehti sillä Läyhön toisen lämpimässä Varu toisen vaipan alla Tukeela tupassa toisen huoliin toisen huonehessa Tukeela tupassa toisen huoliin toisen huonehessa
Thank you very much, Taika. I next invite Madam Prosecutor to address us.
Mr. President, Honourable Judges, Mr. Registral, Your Excellency, President of the Bar, Learned colleagues and confreers, ladies and gentlemen. It is a distinct honour to address you today at the official opening of the 2019 judicial year on behalf of my office. I, along with my team, stand before you as a dedicated party to the proceedings before this Court and indeed, a partner in our respective role in pursuit of international criminal justice under the seminal treaty that founded this critical judicial institution. We welcome today's opportunity to be in your midst as we must continue to pursue this shared commitment through fair and efficient criminal proceedings that embrace the participation of all parties and participants within the legal framework of the Rome Statute. Having just celebrated the twentieth anniversary of the adoption of the Rome Statute last year and as we work towards the twentieth anniversary of the Court itself, I observe with firm conviction that the creation of the International Criminal Court and its work have sent an important normative but also structural and systems-based structural and systems-based message globally: that first, the commission of mass atrocities as merely politics by other means must no longer receive a pass; and that the perpetrators irrespective of rank or official status must answer for their crimes as challenging as the task may be; that an international criminal justice system is crucial to a rule-based global order; and that its institutional manifestation in the form of the ICC is now a reality and an important component of the global system. Today, the court benefits from the membership of one hundred and twenty-three state's parties and has possibly greater reach due to the court's jurisdictional competence. In line with the solemn undertaking I took when I assumed office, along with my team, we have advanced our mandate under the statute honourably, faithfully, impartially, and conscientiously with the plight of the victims foremost and always on our minds. That commitment rooted in conviction has resulted in much activity, from policy formulation on traditionally under-reported crimes and case selection and prioritization to advancing with tangible results and without overreach on the various situations across the globe over which we have jurisdiction. Much work remains to be done. We are committed to the task and our mandate under the statute will continue to honour and will honour it with conviction and courage undeterred. Our conscience is clear, so is our resolve to advance our mandate and to forge ahead notwithstanding the various obstacles that often stand in our way. As we undertake this crucial work, we also continuously look to build on experiences, identifying and honing best practices and strategies to improve efficiency and ensure optimal impact over matters that we exercise control. We believe this is a part of our professional duty and we encourage such approach. We are also alive to and very much conscious of the challenges present, from complex operating environments to deficits in cooperation and changing political climates coupled with a dwindling resource capacity against ever-increasing demands. These challenges remind us that the pursuit of international criminal justice cannot fully succeed and produce consistent results without support and cooperation; that indeed, there can be a direct correlation between efficient and effective cooperation and efficient and effective judicial proceedings. The efforts of all actors within the system are required to ensure success. I benefit from this opportunity to thank the state's parties, the United Nations, civil society, and indeed, all who stand by the court and the values of the Rome Statute and who demonstrate that support through tangible cooperation and assistance. Honourable Judges, Your Excellencies, esteemed colleagues, as the court matures into a crucial component of a rule-based global order and the international rule of law, the institution continues to evolve, filled with activity, ideas, and contributions of many, including dedicated and skilled individuals gathered here today, in this courtroom, and across the court, who in a way or another contribute to the court's proceedings and ultimately, to the development of legal norms which will define the institution for future generations. Success should never lull us into complacency; neither should failures or setbacks diminish our resolve to stand up and resolutely continue on the path we started in Rome over twenty years ago. All of us, officers of this court, whether as judges, prosecutors, defence counsel, legal representatives of victims, or duty counsel, we all play a crucial role as indispensable parts of the Rome Statute system and we shoulder great responsibilities. The stakes and expectations are high. There is no room for error. We must apply the letter and the spirit of the law conscientiously. Our greatest strength is our common resolve and commitment in the service of justice to the international rule of law and accountability for the world's most serious crimes with full respect for the due process of law. The court must stand tall as a beacon of hope and as a critical pillar of effective justice in response to atrocity crimes. I, along with my team, remain committed, more than ever, to play our part in this regard and to seek justice we all yearn for with utmost dedication and integrity. As we inaugurate this year's judicial calendar, we join our colleagues from the other organs and independent counsel in the spirit of collegiality as we fulfil our mandate under the Rome Statute, each within our respective roles. I thank you.
Thank you very much, Madame Prosecutor. Now, I will invite the President of the International Criminal Court Bar Association, Chief Charles Taku, to address us.
Mr. President, Your most distinguished lotships, Madame Prosecutor, Mr. Registrar, Your Excellencies. I'm honoured to be here today to represent the members of the International Criminal Court Bar Association in this important occasion of the opening of the judicial year of the International Criminal Courts. And would like to thank Excellency President Chile Ebo Osusi for the privilege to speak at today's special ceremony. Last year was a momentous year marking the twentieth anniversary of the Rome Statute. And this year should continue the height in momentum for international justice. This is an opportunity for the ICCBA to strongly affirm our wavering support for the universal values enshrined in the Rome Statute, including the right to fair and expeditional proceedings. Excellencies, Your most distinguished honours, the election of new principals at the presidency of the ICC and the registry last year has invigorated the ICC and its mandate and the ICCBA in its full support of the principals and judiciary of the ICC. The ICCBA occupies an important role, acting as a bridge between victim and defence counsel and their teams and the court. The ICCBA continues to play a fundamental role in building relationships and providing assistance to the organs of the court and will continue throughout the coming year and beyond. Even as we celebrate the achievement of the ICC, we need to remain mindful and strive to continue improvements and ensure that the ICC continues to uphold the rule of law and the highest standard of justice. While we do not know what lies ahead in the future, we need to keep thinking ahead to strengthen and empower the ICC of tomorrow. As we gather this morning to mark the opening of the judicial year, Your most distinguished honours, it is fitting for me to speak about the steps that the ICCBA is taking on some pertinent issues. The association has been actively involved in the current review of the legal aid system. A core component of a strong, effective, and just ICC is a properly resourced and administered legal aid system to ensure the highest level of competency in legal representation at the court. The ICCBA appreciates the effort of the registrar to reform the legal aid system and pledges to continue working with the court in a constructive and diligent manner to develop proposals for properly funded, fair, efficiently administered, and effective legal aid system that is worthy of the high quality of justice demanded by the Rome Statute. The ICCBA has also organised training of members on both substantive and procedural law and will continue with this throughout this judicial year to ensure the highest levels of competence of counsel. On the critical issues of ethics, professional responsibility, and the right to a safe working environment, the ICCBA has taken strong and clear action. The ICCBA has issued guidance to all victim and defence team members on the obligations under the Code of Professional Conduct and with regard to preventing harassment in the workplace. And we are in the process of establishing a complaints mechanism which we hope will be implemented in the coming months. We welcome collaboration with the other guns of the ICC on this important initiative throughout the judicial year. The ICCBA is now firmly established as a primary representative body of counsel and support staff before the court. A key objective of the ICCBA is mandatory membership of the association for all its counsel. Mandatory membership would ensure the independence of the ICCBA and its capacity to maintain a high level of professional competence and high ethical standards among counsel and support staff. The ICCBA requests your honours to support this proposal during the judicial year. On behalf of the ICCBA, Your Excellency, Your Excellencies, and all of you gathered here today, I wish you all the best for the new judicial year and the ICCBA looks forward to supporting the ICC throughout the coming year. Thanks, Your Honours, for listening.
Thank you very much, counsel. And now invite once more Taika for another song.
Taivast on sininen ja valkoinen taivast on sininen ja valkoinen niin on nuori sydän meni ajatuksia täynnä niin on nuori sydän meni ajatuksia täynnä taivast on sininen ja valkoinen ja tähtösiä täynnä taivast on sininen ja valkoinen ja tähtösiä täynnä niin on nuori sydän meni ajatuksia täynnä niin on nuori sydän meni ajatuksia täynnä enkä mä muille ilmoita mun sydän surujaani enkä mä muille ilmoita mun sydän surujaani synkkämetsä kirkas taivast ne tuntevat huoliaani synkkämetsä kirkas taivast ne tuntevat huoliaani
Thank you very much. Taika is the finisher women's choir. Taika is finished for magical spell. Although they're originally from Finland, they're actually based here in The Hague and their team leader is Ms. Carla Maria Twivanem. I'm sure we could use some of that magic for our work in this year. And on that note, ladies and gentlemen, I now declare the ICC Judicial Year 2019 formally open. On behalf of my colleagues, I thank you, all of you, once more for honouring us with your presence. It really does matter to us. The court is adjourned.